...to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone, please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated or violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La Junta de Concilio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por empezar. Trabajeros, por favor de quitarse la casucha, sombreros y todos, por favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento o... A quien nos siga estas reglas, se le sacará y puede ser reaccionado.
Thank you.
Six oh one, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Castellano, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
Sisera Nevadas?
Here.
Ralph Turan?
Here.
Mayor Yurile Garcia?
Here.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number four, public comment.
Please, we have one speaker, Maria Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. So I wanted to mention two things. I did want to thank the city and the police officers because I have seen much, a bigger presence, presence on Stockyard. I actually did see them pull over two people that were speeding. I hope that's why they pulled them over is because they were speeding. I just saw them pull them over. So during the time that they were out there, I did see a reduction in speeding, which was great. What I also saw, though, that after they left, speeding went back up again. And I mean, it had, it had to have been like five minutes because I was standing outside and, and I looked over because the car is just, right? And I was like, where's the cop? There wasn't the cop just here? And he already had left. And so, or she. And so I was just talking to Mr. Medina about what, what can be a practical solution from here until there's a roundabout. If there'll ever be a roundabout, because maybe there's no funds for a roundabout. And so I'm, I'd like to know that the city's going to continue to work to find a solution, a permitted solution, because I also think that it's wasteful to have our cops out there because the problem is going to continue and continue and continue when they probably should be, you know, worried about burglaries or drugs or whatever, which I, I hope that that's what they're focusing on and not speeding when it, when it can be fixed with a roundabout. Because a roundabout is still not there. What are we doing until then? And so I hope that the city continues to work on that. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is I have, was appointed to the Ethics Commission since January, and I'm still waiting to serve on the commission. And I think Mr. Nevadas is waiting to appoint someone. And I know he's looking. So since the public is here, maybe someone would like to contact Mr. Nevadas because I think that's an important commission that needs to happen in the City of Socorro. And so I, I'm hoping and I'm, I'm eager to start, but we haven't been able to start. So hopefully that can happen soon since we have been waiting. At least I have been waiting since January. I know other people have been waiting for longer. That's it. I just want to thank the city again for all their, all that they do. I know that there's been some changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, the way that they're presented so that it better serves the public. And so I want to thank Mr. Terrazas for, that's your last name, right? Mr. Terraz- yeah, sorry. I want to thank Mr. Terrazas for, for being amenable to, to that suggestion that I had that, and I, and I make the suggestion here too, right? Present, thank you. Present whatever is the public hearing, what it's about before asking for public comments. Thank you.
Item number five, proclamation to support and recognize breast cancer awareness month from October 1st through October 31st, 2018. Whereas breast cancer is the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer for women in the United States and remains the second leading cause of cancer death among American women, and whereas mammography and x-ray of the breast is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. Early detection and improved treatment is believed to have significantly reduced the number of deaths caused by breast cancer. And whereas researchers, scientists and numerous nonprofit organizations are dedicated to discovering the cure for breast cancer. During the month of October, we acknowledge the extraordinary commitment and effort invested in this cause. And whereas, we recognize that over two and a half million Americans are breast cancer survivors that give us hope of a better future. Now therefore, with support for those who continue to cope with breast cancer, I, Elia Garcia, Mayor of the City of Socorro, Texas, on behalf of the city council, extend our deepest respect for survivors and those advocating for prevention and a cure. And in so doing, hereby proclaim October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Ma- Month. Item number six, presentation by city manager regarding September's 2018 monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to give you a couple of highlights regarding our monthly report for September. The municipal courts department collected fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars in September. They received two hundred and seventy citations from Socorro PD, nineteen sentations from DPS and two ordinance violation citations. Our HR department celebrated September's birthdays and anniversaries on September the 28th. Employee of the month was Joseph Ortiz, a labor from Public Works. Civil service meeting was September the 24th to discuss ordinance 186 and amend the peace officer application. There was one separation, our parks and public works director, Joel Gonzalez. We did one interview for police officer on September 7th, and on September 25th, we interviewed for the executive assistant position on parks in Public Works Department, assisted with the preparation of the harvest festival, cleaned four ponding areas on Tejano subdivision, which includes Laura Joe and Rosa and Richardson. There were potholes on, that were repaired in Sun Park, Moon Road, Grijalva, Richardson and Willetka. They reinforced the berms at Thunder and Stockyard to prepare for the rains, and they continued to maintain mole and groom all of city parks and ponding areas. Our police department received one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two calls for service in the month of September. There was thirty-four arrests for the month, and police officers continued to attend training to keep them in compliance with certification. Our city clerk department conducted and prepared minutes for two regular meetings and two special meetings on September the 6th, 13th, 20th and 27th. She received twenty-nine open records requests and responded to thirty-two. Preparation of nine publications. Our planning and zoning department collected twenty thousand, five hundred and ninety-two for the month, issued a hundred and forty-one permits, thirty-five registration, five applications and twenty-one letters. Our recreations department had the harvest festival on September 22nd, works on wheelie safety campaign from September 25th through October the 9th, participated in the Socorro High School parade, Department of Theater and Dance at UTEP performing the Bless Me Ultima on September the 15th and the 29th, and added a zumba class on Saturdays. Our IT department removed and replaced outdated network lines at the Rio Vista Community Center, created a stormwater management page for our website via grant office guidance, and troubleshooted all IT related issues with the city departments. Our grants department logged in approximately two hundred and fifty-eight service hours across various grant projects, completion and submission of the TECQ Phase Four MS4 permit annual report and the award announcement of fifty-four thousand dollars for the Socorro Police Department for fiscal year 2019. And that concludes the highlights for the month of September. I don't know if you all have any questions. I ran out of breath.
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to move item number nine to regular agenda? Mr. Duran?
Eric, could we please move item number nine from consent agenda to the regular agenda?
Motion. Second.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia is absent.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion. Make a motion to deny.
Consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, sorry. Make a motion to approve. Second.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number nine, introduction, first reading and calling for a public hearing for the proposed conditional use permit for a mechanic shop on tract 11, block seven, Socorro Grant at 9945 Alameda Avenue.
Good evening, mayor and council. The reason we're asking for this to be moved to the regular agenda is because we included the incorrect verbiage. Historically, we presented these cases where there's a conditional use permit request. We've had public hearings before. Well, this time we included the incorrect verbiage instead of putting other different kind of verbiage, like consider and take action or something like that. We included introduction, first reading and calling for a public hearing. So we're asking you to delete this item so we can bring it back in the following agenda.
Make a motion to delete. Second.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez is absent and Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number 12, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot 11, Block 2, El Gran Valle subdivision at 11530 Valle Verde Road from R1, Single Family Residential to R2, Medium Density Residential for a proposed townhouse or duplex. Six fourteen, public hearing is now open.
I'm just going to repeat during the public hearings at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the plot is, or had, at the last meeting is presented beforehand so that the public knows exactly what we're talking about. They can see it on the map and see if it applies to them. And so maybe someone here did want to speak on it, but maybe they don't know exactly what Lot 11, Block 2 subdivision, you know, whatever, whatever is. So I would just suggest that we can do that for every public hearing. Thank you.
Mayor and council, this item that we're talking about is located at Lot 530, Valle Verde.
Six fifteen, public hearing is now closed.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Victor Perez arrived to the meeting at six fifteen.
Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of an, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot 11, Block 2, El Gran Valle subdivision at 11530 Valle Verde Road from R1, Single Family Residential to R2, Medium Density Residential for a proposed townhouse or duplex.
On this case, the, the applicant is asking to change the zoning to R2, Medium Density Residential. They want to build a duplex in the property. This case was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny, and it was also recommended by a planning and zoning department to deny it. The reason is because this request is contrary to the provisions in the Texas Local Government Code, and there's a potential for producing more traffic. It's contrary to chapter 211.004.
Well, I'll make a motion to deny based on planning and zoning recommendation using a provision of Texas Local Government Code, chapter 211.004. Second.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action to approve updated peace officer employment application.
Good e- excuse me, good evening, mayor and council. The reason we're bringing this application to you all for approval is because this updated application meets the state standard that the state has set for peace officer applications. It was reviewed by our lawyers and it was approved. We took it to civil service on September 24th and they also approved it. It is a more complete application. If, if and if it is completed in its entirety, it does offer a more complete picture of the applicant. Okay? Notably, there's a section on social media that has been added. Undetected acts have also been added. And it's just very mu- it's much more complete than, than the previous application or the current application.
Mr. Perez?
And you said that this, this is what the state has generated.
Right, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Yes, sir.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No, no, I, I like the idea that we're being uniformed, but one of the things is that Mr. Perez has, has stated a while back and I was told in agreement that any changes brought to us, could you highlight them and stuff so that we won't have to be looking at page after page and we'll know where we're at? Just for the future. That's it. That's it. But everything is great.
Thank you for that suggestion, sir. This, and it, there are a lot of changes on this one. A lot. I mean, it's similar information, but there's just, the format has changed and it's just asked for a whole lot more. It also helps our, our investigators when they're conducting background investigations because a lot more information is in there so they don't have to go searching for it. So again, if it's completed in its entirety, it offers a much better picture of the, of the applicant and it, and it expedites the background investigation.
The next time, we'll, we'll make sure that we add the current one and then the new one so you all can compare the differences. Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
And we, we've kind of always done that, like, we didn't do it.
No, no, I know because it's a lot of documentation. So I mean, I, I understand.
You could get the current?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Item number 15, discussion and action to enter into a contract for electrical service upgrades at the Rio Vista Community Center with O Paso Electric Company in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-six with twenty-seven cents.
May I have to approve this for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council. We're ready to proceed with the next phase of our capital improvement plan, which will be the upgrading of electrical services for the community center. Currently, it's not powerful enough to house the new HVAC units that will be going in the back of the community center as well as the additional lighting that will be coming to the property. All this will still go through the state in terms of our planning processes and licensing and registration, which will also comply with planning and zoning point of permits and inspections as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number 16, discussion and action to award the bid to Creative Bus Sales and Lease for a new ADA vehicle through 5310 Grant. Funding grant award eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. Transportation development credit twelve thousand, seven hundred. Cost of vehicle seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven. No match required from the city due to TDC credits.
Motion to approve. Second.
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number 17, discussion and action and approval request for Burbidge Acres Replat. Aye, being a replat of Lot 1, Block 3, Burbidge Acres Replat D, located at 12251 Tellaride Drive.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Is there a map or is there something that we can reference?
This is a part of a previous, previously approved plat. The only thing that is changing is a small verbiage that was in the middle of the plat. It's provided in your backup. On the previous plat, it used to say for non-residential use. In the county, it was a requirement at the time of the, of the recording of, of this plat or this document because in the county, they don't have any zoning. So they were asking them to just put a label of the existing condition at the time of this recording. And now this came into, this little note came into conflict when the new owner was trying to install modular homes to use for residential use. So now he, he's required by the county to record a new plat showing it's, the meets and bounds are not changing or anything. It's only they're just removing the little label. You're going to see the little label on the second page of your backup material, and the third page is a new one.
Joe, there was no second page.
And no third page.
That's why I was asking.
Maybe second paragraph?
This is what you should have received.
Yeah, we didn't. No, it was, uh...
See, that's why I was asking.
This is the old plat where it shows non-residential use. The new one is the same thing, but without the, without the... Non-residential use. This is the old one. This is the new one.
Well, they changed.
And just for curiosity, what, how far up is, is the property? It's on, along Alameda?
It's in the county inside Socorro's ETJ.
Right, right.
And if you look at this map here, this is the end of Socorro. So the lot is approximately three thousand feet from Socorro.
And just for disclosure, I know Mr. Duran is from high school. Doesn't mean that I cannot vote unbiasedly.
Same here.
It's a county, it's a county.
I don't know.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sisera Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia is absent.
Item number 18, discussion and action to approve municipal judge two-year contract and authorize city manager or her designate to finalize contract.
Motion to approve discussion. Second.
So we had asked to go ahead and add some stipulations to the contract regarding, and I said I was going to go back to staff. So the changes are in number five, and we are adding, we just changed the verbiage just because on the one that you have there, the sentence, the, the paragraph wasn't making too much sense. When we were reading it, it wasn't, it wasn't flowing correctly. So the current one reads, the judge is required to be present for court, two court days per week, each month and a third day per month as needed. Right, so she'll show up two days out of the week and one extra day a month as needed. Okay? And then we also added the, the judge is required to travel to the municipal courts or other appropriate locations at the officer's discretion. And the reason it's at the officer's discretion because you wanted them to, for her to come all the way to Socorro, but sometimes the officers are already traveling that way, either way. And I, I, I wanted Chief Ray to, I know that the last time the meeting, Mr. Duran brought up some points, and there was a misconception of the judge not coming here, but she wasn't being called for because there was a change to the annex. So we can no longer take these prisoners to the annex. It has to be downtown. So it would, it would delay our response time if we make a travel all the way here, wait for her, if we're still going downtown. Right? Correct. And we'll have Mr. Ray, if you all have any questions. Chief Ray.
Mayor Council? All right.
Mr. Duran, I'm sure you have... Mr. Duran?
So just so you know, with the, we had a request from the, the jail magistrate who processes our intox. Basically, if you get a DWI, if they're going to put a interlocked component to their vehicles, they're requesting that we go to the jail magistrate for those so they can be consistent across the county since we do have a zero tolerance, zero tolerance now in the county with yet to get a blood draw. Secondly, the annex, we used to take officers, I mean, our prisoners there. However, since their construction was done, they decided that they're not going to allow anybody go to their facility there and we have to go downtown anyway. So those are some of the issues that, that we have to face now since it's close to us.
Thank you.
So I wanted, I wanted to clear that up because a misconception was that she wasn't, that she was refusing to come, but she wasn't being called. And the reason they were calling her was because they were still, they're still required to travel there. But I mean, in case of an emergency, she doesn't have any issue. She has to travel all the way here, and it's, it's stipulated in the contract at the officer's discretion.
No, no, and that's, it's good clarification because, you know, people tend to be misled and stuff, and it's good to clear the airways. I just want to talk back on number five. With that extra third day, guys, at the judge's discretion? She's not going to do it for free, right? Because we, we have to...
Well, no, you've already paying her for that service.
Okay.
Right, that service is included in the, now she has to come in every time that we call her. That is what she's required to do. Okay, the only, the only thing is that the officer's discretion, in case, he's still going to go over there. The last thing is we want to delay the response time.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the days that she worked.
Yeah, it's not over and it's not over and above what she's going to get paid. It's within the salary.
Correct. She's...
That, it's, it's in here, right? It's all good.
No, no, we, we discussed it and it'll be the third, the third day that's going to be added, that is as needed.
Okay.
Part of her, the service is ready.
Right, I just wanted to clear that too.
And also on number 10, we added the sixty-day written notice that she would put a sixty-day notice in case she wants to terminate her contract. She was inquiring that if, let's say we wanted to terminate the contract before the year, if she could at least get a thirty-day notice from us notifying her that we no longer need her services. However, the, our attorney's saying that's up to council. We won't put it on the, unless you all approve it. Right, but I mean, she's already giving you a sixty-day notice, the city, and she's asking that if we want to terminate her contract, of course, I mean, if there's no... we wanna terminate her contract, of course, I mean, if there's no re- no breach of contract or anything like that.
That's crazy.
Yeah. No, I- I think it'll work, and also, it'll give us time to, if we do decide to go that route, it gives us enough time to actually go and find a replacement, so.
And that's not added in- in the contract that you have in front of you? We would add it because attorney said that would be a council's decision, and- and he wasn't in agreeance to put it in the, unless he has your direct.
If you, you can amend your motion to add that, so that we won't have to bring it back to council because we already, we could already agree on it if we so choose. Okay?
Uh, at this time, I have to go ahead and amend my motion for item number, uh, eighteen, to, uh, in- include the, uh, thirty-day notice from the city to the judge, uh, that we are, we are intent on terminating the contract.
Correct, the thirty-day?
Thirty-day notice.
Right, second.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz.
And with the changes that we made to the question.
Yes, and the other changes, yes.
On number five, okay.
Senator Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Aye.
Item number nineteen, discussion on action to provide direction to staff on funding options for the five-year capital improvement plan.
Anyone want to log?
I'm sorry?
Which is, when is the log?
Today?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow. If anybody wants to be generous and contribute to the capital.
Right. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Mayor and council, if we could just go over the, uh, the items in your backup for item nineteen. Um, the city manager and I had a lovely discussion with Tom Lawrence, who's with the, uh, he has a firm called Lawrence Financial Consulting LLC, and he's worked with the city numerous times with our COs. And, um, the very first page he's giving us, um, based on the information we gave him, a- a combination tax revenue certificates of obligation series, a sample schedule of events. And this, this, uh, sample schedule is predicated on us selling the- the COs, starting with fiscal year twenty. Uh, we're, we, uh, after looking at- at our situation and, um, considering what the tax, the effect on our tax rate would be to- to, including a- a ten million, um, certificate of obligation, uh, it would make sense for us to be able to massage the tax rate, so that when we go into twenty-twenty, or, yeah, twenty-twenty, that we're not, we haven't, um, uh, taken too much of the resources from our maintenance and operations and- and paying off debt, uh, more than what we, what our capacity is. If we could look at the first schedule, it, he, he, uh, we asked him to do a five million schedule and a ten million schedule. The first one is the five million for a new issue. Um, I think it's important to know that- that he's basing this on a tax base, based on a two percent annual growth, which is fairly conservative, because, you know, all those nerdy accountants are that way. And so he's, he's showing us growing at a- at a fairly slow pace, I'm, I would say that, uh, we would probably meet that, uh, one point four billion, uh, probably closer to the middle of that schedule than at the end at- at twenty-thirty-nine. But, uh, but based on this, this, um, at five million dollars, we would be adding approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our debt service for the next twenty years. Now, it- it just, also, just note that in twenty-thirty-four, we would have paid off all the other debt by then. But, uh, and it also, you could see that, um, by the twelfth year, I- I believe, we'd be back at about the same, um, INS tax rate. Now, for the ten million dollar issue, it doesn't quite double, but it- it comes close to it. If we look at it again, it's also based on a two percent annual growth. I- I- I really feel like we would get there a lot faster. Uh, again, they're predicting one point four billion, by twenty-thirty-nine, I'm, I'm gonna say that we would get there a lot quicker. But it would add approximately seven hundred thousand dollars every year to our debt service. And that's why we're bu- we don't wanna do it, like, immediately, but wanna wait till we have the twenty-twenty tax rate in front of us and see how that's gonna affect us, and see how much we have to, um, deal with, uh, making those changes. As you can see, it's gonna take us from approximately, and you look at the sample, the- the rightmost column, says sample INS tax rate. We're right, right at point one-eight-one right now, and for the first year, it takes us to point two-four-two, and we stay there kind of for a while, and then, then at the end of the thirty-four, uh, twenty-thirty-four, it goes down to practically nothing. So, and again, just, just so you- you see, see how we- we get eaten alive by interest, we're gonna pay off ten million dollars over twenty years, and it's gonna cost us four million dollars. Because you can see the payoff is fourteen point two-eight-five, just so you know. Do you have any questions? Oh, I- I should go back and from the, from the beginning, we did look at other, uh, possible, um, uh, funding sources. Uh, as you know, the- the mayor and, uh, Mr. Rodriguez and I and the city manager, we went to San Antonio to meet with, uh, Congressman Hurd and the NAD Bank, and they had a, they had a lovely presentation for us. But the bottom line is that- that they're pretty much, if you're gonna borrow money from them, it has to be for a specific project, and what we're really looking for is something that we can incorporate different projects, you know, of different, uh, capacities and- and, uh, and items. So, uh, that was, and plus, uh, we'd be paying a higher interest rate with the NAD Bank. Uh, they're, they're more of a market rate kind of, uh, entity. The other thing that- that Tom Lawrence brought up was, uh, something called tax anticipation notes, and they actually sound very good from the beginning. Um, there's not as much administrative, uh, work that needs to be done, because you have to pay it back quicker, which is, you know, um, maybe something in the future that we know we can, we- we can pay it off pretty quickly, we could use those, uh, but in this case, right now, really, the- the COs are our best bet, and that's why we recommended that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I will.
The last time we were doing the budget and- and doing other capital improvements.
Yes.
What was the total, if you wanted to do everything on that capital improvement?
I think we were up to sixteen million.
Sixteen million, correct.
Sixteen point six, it's a ten-to-two-year back.
So, you know, I- I think that we should, we should go for the ten, because we get a better tax rate, um, we're able to pay it off. And our growth is- is growing, so we- we will catch up to, to these numbers pretty quick.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Mr. Perez?
Is that we can accelerate on the payments to COs, right?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, and our city's booming.
No, it's just that, because when you, uh, mentioned the tax anticipation.
Mm-hmm, notes, yes.
Uh, it's a, it, you have it for a short period of time.
Right.
And your stress to, to, uh, pay it off is greater, whereas you can, uh, if you have the COs, it's not as stressful, I guess.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And as the city grows, we can actually, when we do the- the rollback, we can actually use a portion of the tax and just say, hey, we're gonna pay into it, and that'll be the easiest and quickest way to do it.
Yeah.
Also, Mr. Lawrence, uh, mentioned to us that before they were taking out COs, they took one in oh-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and then fourteen, so it's been a while before we've gone out and taken more COs.
Mr. Perez?
And I think that, uh, it's going to get to the point where we're gonna have to do this, but I think that beyond letting you all know what to do in terms of what vehicle to use, I mean, it seems like we're looking at COs, we need to have a really good itemized plan as to what we're gonna be doing.
And that's, uh, our city planner's actually already working on that, and, and, I mean, just, uh, talking to him the other day, I mean, the debt, you know, he- he's kinda scary when he says how many, how much debt we would have to in order to fix the city of Socorro, it's, it's in the hundred mil- you know, million dollars.
And, and just to add to that, as our capital improvement, it was only sixteen million, but now that we have somebody with qualifications comes out and says, oh, that's chunk change compared to what we really need, so, I mean, it's one of.
And then we'll be able to prioritize.
Yes.
You know, what's, what's the, the immediate need.
Because I think that's what, uh, I don't think our constituents have a problem, well, they don't like it, but they, they're more accepting of if we provide a to-do list and how that money is going to be spent. I mean, it's not easy, it's not, it's not an easy pill to swallow, but if it's because of the growth that we need to do it, then I think they would understand.
And I think that by going with the schedule that's on here, right, it's, it's gonna take us all this budget year, but by next year, we'll have an itemized plan, and we're able to do our due diligence before we incur debt and know exactly where our money, our pennies are going.
So what, what we do?
So, make a motion to approve?
Well, is it five or the ten?
For the ten.
I have to reflect this.
The ten?
Um, may, we have a speaker?
Because it's a better ring.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I guess I have a question. Um, this might be the first time that I've heard of certificates of obligation. And so, to dumb it down a little bit for me, um, I'd like to know whether this is something that upfront will raise taxes for the constituents of the city of Socorro? If not, whether it's something that will raise taxes in the future, because maybe we got too much into debt that we need to raise our taxes so we can pay it off, because someone's knocking down Socorro's door. Um, if neither of one of those is true or not that big of a, um, issue, um, Mr. Perez is right, I think that it's important, not just logistically and for efficiency purposes, to have a plan, so that we know what we're funding, and not just fund something and then start dishing it out to whatever new idea we may have. But it also, I also think it's very important, because it holds accountable future city council members. And so personally, I'd like to see. Thank you, a plan before we start collecting money or spending money. Thank you.
Mr. Perez?
Are there any speakers? I think that, yes, taxes would be raised, but, uh, again, we need to make the distinction between city taxes and school district taxes. School district taxes are always going to be higher than, than Socorro city taxes, and, um, looking at, for example, the, let's say on the ten million dollar side, that we were going, that we would add, go for those certificates of obligation, a home valued at a hundred and thirty thousand, and that's on the high side. Sure. A home valued at a hundred and thirty thousand would have a tax rate increase of point zero-six one-one-nine-two, and that would translate to a six dollar and cer- six dollar and sixty-three cents, uh, monthly tax increase, six dollars and sixty-three cents on a hundred and thirty thousand dollar home. The annual amount for that would be eighty dollars on that same a hundred and thirty thousand dollar home with, if we go for the ten million dollar, uh, COs. And so I think that that would be part of the, um, the, 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 um, projections and the, um, the PR package, I guess, to the community, making sure that we in- inform them that it's not the school district, it's not the s- the city that has larger amount of taxes, but rather the, the, this is the school district, I think I said that right?
You said it's the school district?
Yeah, it's the school district. And so, um, I think that's where we need to, because we always get that, I know I do.
Yes.
And we, that's where we need to make sure that we do a really good, and I hate to call it PR, but public relations, make sure that we really reach out to the community to be able to answer questions like that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And, and another note, we do do a capital improvement plan, we do bring it up here, we talk about it, we start addressing what we need, what are we gonna use the money for, so nobody can really say that we don't inform the public. It's very difficult, because the public doesn't come and get informed. So it's not that we don't do our due diligence, we do do our due diligence, it's just that people don't make the time. People don't have the time. People can't make it to these meetings, but there's certain things we do to, to post it, and we're gonna post it everywhere we can, and we're gonna do whatever we can to let the people know. We do do all of that. So, if this is the first time you're hearing it, it's because we didn't do it since two thousand and fourteen, you know? It's not, we do it every year, it's, these are projects that need to get done, and, you know, we're putting, you know, your hard work, money, and all our money too, because we're, we're being taxed ourselves, you know? Um, but, uh, this is something that, that needs to happen. Um, I've always said that, you know, for, since nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and thirteen, minimal work has been done in the city of Socorro, minimal. So there's been a lot of work done since two thousand and fourteen to, to, I wanna say today. So, yes, we, we're putting your hard work, money to work, and yes, we notify all the people. So, you know, just wish to share that we're gonna continue doing the best we can moving forward.
Senator Rodriguez?
Just to clarify for the ten million dollars. Aye.
Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colomia Logos.
Item number twenty, discussion on action to approve Mayor Elia Garcia to attend the NALIO twelve-bayonial National Policy Institute for Newly Elected Officials, which will be held November fifteen through eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, in Washington DC through a scholarship agreement.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Come on.
Aye.
Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez? And Ivan Colomia Logos.
Do we have anything for twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-three? Do we have a motion to delete items twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
Make.
What you made?
Second.
Senator Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Senator Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevarez?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
We adjourned.
Mm-hmm.
With number ten?
Guess it doesn't.
It was, um, so we have put all of the.
No, it's not. State, no, 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 no.
But what we put out was nine.
Because I was mapping with COVID.
Right.
No, he has the obligation, only extended, no, it only extends. No, and he do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not our fault.
I love goodies. Man, you got lots of goodies.
Girl, you, you have a misconception. That, that's all we do. We, we, and ask Mr. Perez, and we have a community meeting, and nobody shows up, judge for those. So, don't say that we don't go far and beyond.